Yeah.
At about 6:00 PM, we'll call the meeting. Let's hear it for the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. You have roll call, please, Mary.
Mr. Bevmo?
Here.
Mr. Beard?
Here.
Mrs. Head?
Here.
Mrs. Ram?
Here.
Mr. Cranes?
Here.
Mrs. Medina?
Here.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
First item on our agenda tonight is special recognition for the Wisconsin Elementary Art Teacher of the Year Achievement for Dustin Anderson. Dustin, would you like to come forward?
Okay.
How you doing, Dustin?
Great, how are you?
I'm doing awesome. Okay, this award has been presented. Dustin Anderson joined the district's art education team in 2007. He has been an outstanding art educator who makes a positive impact on students, and the board is extremely proud to be recognizing his accomplishment in receiving the Wisconsin Art Education Association Elementary Teacher of the Year Award. Dustin's students have had their work entered into numerous exhibits over the years, including the Kids' Art and Intermediate Art Show, the Southwood County Cultural Center, the Youth Art Month State Capitol Show in Madison, and at the Lee Yocke Woods Museum in Wasa. Leadership and collaboration are strong traits of Dustin's and his profession, as he has served in various roles over the years, as an art education advisor to the state WAEA Board, a conference presenter, and as an organizer of numerous workshops, art shows, and art-related activities across the state. Dustin has written and received numerous grants, including the WAEA Potawatomi Grant and the WAEA Mini Grant, the Very Special Arts Grant, and twice receiving a WRPS Endowment Grant. The district is proud of Dustin's efforts to create and rebrand mascots and logos for each school and for his work in creating a permanent art collection on display at each school. As a community leader, Dustin has been involved in creating and fundraising the Little Free Library Project, participating in the Encouraged Tribune Building Project, and has been involved in summer camp activities, including as head director for over 15 years. Principal Tim Brunz from Grant Elementary says of Dustin, "Mr. Anderson is one of the strongest, the most effective teaching professionals that I've had the pleasure to work with in my 41-year career. His teaching skill, adaptability, and insights have made him an invaluable colleague and effective educator." Congratulations, Dustin, on receiving the Wisconsin Art Education Association's Elementary Teacher of the Year Award. Your amazing talent is a true asset to our district. The board is extremely proud of your efforts and wants to take this opportunity to formally recognize the positive impact you are making in the lives of students.
Thank you very much.
Congratulations.
Excellent question.
Andy did a heck of a job on Grant Declaration for Read Across America, as did other staff, but he was apparently pivotal in that regard.
And I just have to say, getting this this year seems really ironic, because you don't always feel like you could be Educated of the Year, starting in September through till the snow flew. We were teaching outside under a carport, but we still managed to reach our curriculum, and I just really appreciate everything here at WRPS. I love working here.
Well, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, next, we'll move on to the student representative report. Rachel.
Okay, so I have a few things, and then I have a special bio for you guys. Okay, so surveillance testing started last week. I got tested. It's super efficient. I didn't expect it to be so awesome. I just walked in there, they were like, "Have you had COVID?" Stuck thing up my nose, and I went, "Oh, easy." I was like, "Whoa, this is so cool." So, that's very fun. I did not get contacted, so thumbs up. Don't worry. So, since we're going back technically to four days a week next week, because the juniors have the ACT, they have different student groups, including student council, which are going to be drawing with chalk on the sidewalks, so look out for that if you're going, when you're in. Seniors, we were talking about this earlier, but seniors are able to drop down to two classes a term this term, so that there's less people in the building. I took that opportunity, and I'm only taking three classes, so it's really nice. And finally, very fancy, so student council won the WASC, Spirit of Excellence, and the Spirit of Excellence, if you don't know, is basically a giant compiling of everything that we did in one school year. So, everything that Lincoln did, so including like Trigger Can from DECA to all the different orchestra events, to just everything that Lincoln has put on, we write little essays about, and we compile it into whole thing. And we actually won this year's state winner. It's our first time ever winning, so very exciting. And I get to present this to you guys in the copy of the winning Spirit of Excellence for the state.
Oh.
Yes.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Great.
That's it.
Rachel, do you find the test very uncomfortable, or?
No. Like, it's not, I've had tests before that, like, you know, like, go into your brain, and then it's like, whoa, you're very disoriented after. No, they just kind of went in, and then it was done, and I didn't even realize, so it was very, not enjoyable, but.
So, did you recommend it?
Yeah.
Today, they tested, I talked to Kelly's Wiki, the associate principal who's working, helping coordinate the testing at Lincoln, and they did 37 students in like 37 minutes, or it was like 38, 37. So, the process is all organized where it takes almost no time to get through it. Yeah, and there were some bugs on the front end, but of course, there's some things that we worked through, and I'm sure there'll be additional changes as time progresses, but it's always good. I mean, I was talking to my son, who's been pulled, one of my kids has been pulled twice already, and talking to him on the way home, I'd run home real quick this afternoon, and he said, "You know, I don't really like getting called on to class each time, but honestly, at least then you know that you're not positive, and you know, it is what it is." So, there is the benefit of knowing that. And Dr. Falk, it's a good time for a quick update on that topic, but Dr. Falk and I were in contact today, and she's running some preliminary numbers. This is, they don't have access to any information aside from just straight numbers, like this is how many we've tested, and this is how many positives we've had. We've had very few positives in a general sense, based on the number of tests we've done. But she rambles numbers for the first week of surveillance testing, we'll run it now for the second week, pardon me, the first two, because last week was kind of the first full week of, let's call it, normal surveillance testing, because remember, we kind of started slow in week one. And then, so this week, that data, and then that'll conclude what our baseline is. And from that, she intends to provide us with some documentation on what that baseline is, so I'll share that with you, and we're contemplating sharing that potentially with parents as well, just to say, "Look, here's how easy it is. It's really not that big of a deal." The downside, of course, is that you find out you're positive, and then you got to isolate, and there's ramifications for that, but in terms of managing a pandemic, you're positive, so you shouldn't be, you know, in amongst your friends and staff members. So, you know, it is what it is, but we should have that data for you here relatively soon, and then, of course, when we go to four day a week, I don't know that a week's worth of data does much good, but probably every couple, there'll be some periodic updates, and very clearly, if we're seeing anything that's concerning, that'll inform decision-making. If we're seeing things maintain the status quo, that means we're going to continue doing what we're doing, and it also sets the stage for next year, so.
Good. Thanks for the report, Rachel. Next, we'll move on to the minutes.
Okay, I would make a motion that the regular Board of Education meeting minutes of February 8, 2021, and the special Board of Education meeting open and close to February 8. Do you approve this, Conchus?
Sorry.
We have a motion, a second, to approve the regular Board of Education meeting minutes of February 8, and the special Board of Education meeting open and close session meeting minutes of February 8. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Close. Motion carries. The minutes are approved. Next item is comments from citizens and delegations. Are there any this month, Mary?
No.
Okay, thank you. We can move on to committee reports. First, we'll start with educational services. Mary.
Okay, thanks, John. I'd like to thank John for chairing the meeting last week, because I always want to be here, so thanks, John.
You're welcome.
Ed Services Committee held its monthly meeting on Monday, March 1st, beginning at 6:00 PM. There were three consent agenda items. Does anyone need anything held out? All right, then I'll start with ES1, District Councilor Curriculum Maps and Health Curriculum Crosswalk. Dr. Danny Scott, the Director of Pupil Services, and Gretchen Neal Bosky, K-12 District School Councilor, Curriculum Chairperson, presented the proposed curriculum maps for the district council curriculum. This is the first time the councilors have been through this process and noted it was interesting and valuable, especially since they were able to clearly define how councilors serve students. Three areas of focus are academic, personal, and social, and career development. The district councilor curriculum committee worked with the health curriculum committee to crosswalk the standards and determine where each standard is addressed. These standards may be addressed in the regular classroom at the elementary level, in health classes at the secondary level, or with some direct instruction coming from school council. And with that, I move to approve the adoption of the proposed K-12 school council curriculum, beginning with the 2021-2022 school year.
Sorry.
Do you want to do them all at one time? Oh, I'm going to say them all. Yeah, thanks. Okay, so ES2, Grade 3 Social Studies Curriculum Maps. Jake Burtonelli, District Social Studies Curriculum Coordinator, explained that the social studies curriculum was approved by the board in spring of 2019. Grade 3 teachers found discrepancies with standards released by the DPI in 2018 and the WRPS curriculum. It was determined that the grade 3 curriculum should be reviewed and condensed. Over the summer, a group of grade 3 teachers revised the maps to better address state standards. The maps were presented to grade 3 teachers in the fall. This winter, the maps were presented to the whole social studies curriculum committee, as well as the district council for constructional improvement. The CII unanimously approved the grade 3 maps. And with that, I move the adoption of the proposed 3rd grade social studies curriculum map, beginning with the 2021-2022 school year. And then ES3 was Central Olks Academy Charter School Draft Contract. Jen Wilhorn, our Central Olks Academy Principal, reviewed the virtual charter school contract between WRPS and Central Olks Academy. The DPI has made additional changes to the contract since background was shared with the Ed Services Committee, and Ms. Wilhorn reviewed those changes. She indicated that another draft for collecting these changes would be shared with the full board for approval at the March 8 meeting. And I move to approve the ES3, the proposed draft of the Central Olks Academy Charter School contract, beginning with the 2021-2022 school year, with the understanding that a new contract proposal will be brought forward if the DPI makes any significant changes during the review process.
Okay.
Okay, we have a motion, a second, to approve ES1, 2, and 3. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Close. Motion carries.
All right, and then we have six updates. The first one, transition from four days a week in-person learning. Superintendent Craig Born indicated that surveillance testing had started last week to establish COVID-positive baseline before the transition to four days a week learning at the secondary level. Because there were positive cases in students that previously had COVID, and after discussion with Dr. Olson and Dr. Falk, it was determined that testing should not include those that have previously had COVID, avoiding any possible false positive results. Plans are progressing, and the anticipated start date is March 15, Tuesday through Friday. Second, disproportionality report. The district's disproportionality identification by DPI. The district is addressing the disproportionality for African-American students in special ed as a whole, and for Hispanic students in the specific disability category of learning disabilities. She indicated that when students with IEPs transfer in from other districts, a thorough review of their IEP is conducted, and if it is felt there are concerns, a new IEP evaluation is conducted, so that students' needs can be better met. The district continues to strive toward eliminating our significantly disproportionality identification through the work of our special ed department and the district's equity work. And third, it was equity work. Sarah Polo, WRPS Equity Coordinator, gave a presentation regarding the newly formed definition of educational equity. She is working with teachers and administrators to determine biases, especially those of color and LGBTQ. There are several professional development opportunities available. Fourth, LHS. Failure rates at Lincoln High School pre- and post-pandemic. LHS Principal Ron Rasmussen reviewed and explained the attachments shared in the background regarding failure rates. Data reflects grading for Term 1 of the 2019-20 and 2020-21 school years. He noted there's a slight increase of approximately 5% between the two years, but also pointed out that of the 90 Fs in 2021, 35, 40 of those students are true. Number five, Roxy Phelps, our Director of Curriculum Instruction, updated the committee on virtual enrollment numbers. Enrollment is down a bit, and the district will see even lower numbers at the trimester. Virtual parents are being notified that where their student is attending as of March 26th is where the student will finish the school year, so it is expected that numbers will drop further as students transition back to the buildings. And last, our reading recovery 2021-22. Jen Wilhorn reported that this school year will be the last school year of WRPS using reading recovery as a reading intervention for first-grade students. It has been difficult to staff reading recovery, as it is a huge time commitment for staff. Jackie Hines, our Reading Recovery Teacher Leader, retired a few years ago, but has agreed to continue assisting the district in that role. However, it is unknown for how long. Removing reading recovery will not affect intervention staffing, and since its inception, there have been many other types of interventions added to assist staff with students of concern. And with that, I move to accept the report of March 1 of the minutes of the Ed Services Committee meeting.
Start.
We have a motion, a second, to approve the meeting minutes of the Ed Services Committee of March 1, 2021. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Close. Motion carries. The minutes are approved. Thank you, Mary. Next item is business services. John.
Thank you, John. Business services, we met on March 1, and we called the meeting to order at 7:25. I do have one note, and I don't think we need to have it sent to us, but item B should say BS2, not BS3. So, that correction will be made, and then we'll approve the minutes with that correction when we get to the end there. Our meeting was called, we were at 7:25, and we had no public comment. Out of our meeting, we had six consent agenda items. Does anybody want anything? No, no. If you're hearing none, our first item, BS1, was Wisconsin School Nutrition Purchase and Cooperative Agreement. This is probably the best $300 we spent, because it's an agreement with 57 school districts, of which Milton Cross Plains area is the administration of the group, but it gives us purchasing power of 57 districts versus one when we go out for food service items. So, there's the savings on the food, the savings on the purchasing power, and then the rebates, basically, probably four or five times full the $300 we paid to get into the group, and the group does track the rebates automatically for Lizzie in the food service department. So, the committee recommends, and I move, the proposed Wisconsin Nutrition Purchasing Cooperative 660301 agreement, in the amount of $300 for the 2021-22 school year, be recommended. All right, BS2 is the floor finish supply bid. It's pretty straightforward. There aren't a lot of bidders in this field, because the waxes for our floors are fairly proprietary, so we have two floor finishing bids to approve here. The first one is with Nasco in the amount of $11,076.72, and the second is Hilliard in the amount of $8,191.91 for approval. BS3 is our CISA 5 contract, and this is our yearly contract for services that we don't provide or have professionals to do this. The biggest group is the Audiology, deaf and hard-of-hearing group, OTPT, visually impaired and the alternative education, which is the school investment. This year, we won't have spots. We're basically paying for students, correct?
Yep, paying for seats versus, so normally it was like five, we had five seats that we had to pay for, and now it's based on the number of kids we have in the program. And most years, we had at least four or five, and sometimes we had six, and you'd pay more. But now, they're doing it directly per pupil, so for us now, we're at three, that's projection, but I mentioned to the committee, it'll likely go up, I would think, if anything, but it's nice to ensure that we're paying, and paying as you go. So, if you got more kids in, you pay more. If you got less kids in, you pay less.
So, the committee recommends, and I move, that the district will continue participating in this program for the 2021-22 school year. Projected cost of the contract is $324,550.80. However, the actual cost will be determined by actual usage of services. Then we have BS4, which is Chromebook Protective Cases. That's fairly straightforward. It's the yearly purchase of these cases for our one-to-one students. We do get some cases back, so we don't have to buy as many computers as we put out. We can recycle the cases if they come back in good condition. So, the committee recommends, and I move, that the purchase of 600 Chromebook cases from Bump Armor at a cost of $15,381.81, which we fund from the 2021-22 technology budget, be approved. Then we have BS5, which is the licensing for library services. This is pretty straightforward. It's again yearly one. It's the, committee recommends, and I move, that the purchase of several online databases from Wills in the amount of $17,587.07 be funded from the 2020-2021 Common School Fund budget. And then the last purchase we had is a collaboration of our two principals, our associate principals, and they gave us a very nice presentation at the committee meeting in regards to cafeteria tables at Rams. The problem they've had is the fact that those long tables that fold in the middle are very cumbersome and very un-user-friendly to social distance, and you can't get as many of them in the cafeteria, which is the most oddly designed cafeteria I've ever seen, but it's been there for years. And it was there when we had 1,500 kids in the building, too, back when I was there. So, they gave us a good presentation on it. They had three bids, and we actually are not taking the lowest bid, due to the fact that the lowest bid did not satisfy the needs of what we were looking for. They were looking for eight and 10-seat tables. The lowest bid only provided 12-seat tables, and the quality of the tables weren't the same as the quality of the bid we're taking. We also are getting in from a company that is in the county, Marshfield Book and Stationery, and they are also providing us graphics on the tables, not all of them, but I imagine pretty close to half, it sounded like they were talking about, that we could put graphics on the tables, and they would include that at no cost. And those graphics could be whatever they designed. The ones they show us examples of would be something with Rams, and proud to be a Rams student, or something like that. So, they put different things on, and they're going to put different graphics on there, too, so that they're not just all plain tables. And the other idea that they pitched with this is the fact that these tables are more mobile and easier to fold up, plus the age of the tables they had, they figured were 15 to 20 years. Many of the seats were bent, or broken, or cracked, or the mechanisms that move the table up are no longer functional and actually probably dangerous, because you don't know if the latch will unlatch, and they don't come open. So, this will make it easier for them to store and move the tables, plus they figure there's going to be other functions with student-parent conferences, that they could have these tables and move them into the gymnasium area and use them for that purpose as well. So, the committee recommends that I move the purchase of cafeteria tables from Wisconsin Rapids, at Wisconsin Rapids Elementary Middle School, from Marshfield Book and Stationery, at a cost of $72,088.75, using elementary and secondary school emergency relief HESR grant Program 2 funds, which, that's even better, is that doesn't even come out of our, hit the big story of that, it's not coming out of our budget. It's using the HESR grant funds as an improvement for student safety and social distance.
And the difference between this bid and the lowest bid is like $2, so we're not spending crazy amounts more for the graphic tables than what we're looking to get, it's fair amount.
Okay, so that would be a second then for ES1, 3, and ES6.
We have a motion, a second, to approve BS1 through BS6. Do you have roll call, please, Mary?
Mrs. Ram?
Yes.
Mrs. Head?
Yes.
Mr. Cranes?
Yes.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Beard?
Yes.
Mrs. Medina?
Yes.
Mr. Bevmo?
Yes. And then, updates and reports, we had some purchase reviews. Phil informed us that they bought vacuuming cameras for the teachers at Lincoln, and basically, he feels that every room now in Lincoln is covered with vacuuming cams, which, those are the ones that are going to be replacing some of the smart boards and basically anything that was on, if anybody's still using an overhead, those are what they're going to be using those for. Then we had the invoice for our police liaison fourth quarter expense, and my favorite purchase of the quarter, basically, is the copy paper direct purchase update. And with that, oh, excuse me, we do have one future agenda item, that is the Trade House Committee meeting on April 5, and then that will be followed by the Trade Homes tour, actually, in June. With that, the committee moves, and I recommend the acceptance of the remaining balance of meeting minutes.
Start.
We have a motion, a second, to approve the Business Service Committee meeting minutes of March 1, 2021. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Close. Motion carries. The minutes are approved. Thank you for the report, John. Next, we have Personnel Services.
Personnel Services met last Monday, March 1, at 7:25 PM. We had no public comment in that meeting. We have eight consent agenda items, or six consent agenda items, and they are as follows. One, the committee recommends, and I move, to approve the eight support staff appointments. Two, the committee recommends, and I move, to approve the five professional staff early retirements. Three, the committee recommends, and I move, to approve the one support staff early retirement. Four, the committee recommends, and I move, to approve the five support staff resignations. Fifth, the committee recommends, and I move, to approve board policies, 672 purchasing procedures, competitive pricing for second reading. And six, the committee recommends, and I move, to approve the language changes in post-employment insurance benefit section, as presented for the following employee handbooks: clerical, office clerical, and aid support staff, professional staff, food service, and custodial and maintenance staff. And what we did in all those contracts is it's consecutive years of employment. You can't have one, then two, and then a break. It has to be consecutive.
I think I might have a direction on the support staff. The PZLE, one, does it seem to be in this list?
That's under new business.
It's under new business. Well, it has the same galvis in the list. It's not included. It's a different position. I bet. Yeah. Larry, you're looking at the one for the. You're looking at the sheet? Yeah. Well, I'm looking at two of them. Yeah, they're different. This has been changed. She was on both of them. Yeah. So, it's a change. They've changed positions.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion, a second, to approve PS1 through PS6. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Close. Motion carries. The minutes are approved. Thank you, Sandy. Next item, agenda referrals, information requests. Have we had anything this month? Okay, let's move back to the legislative agenda. Troy, what's new this month?
So, this month, the main driving force is Governor Evers' budget, but we do have a couple other components to take a look at since the February report, in terms of overall legislative happenings. I'm going to start with February 16, and then we're current from there. February 16 was a big day in the Capitol, but I'm going to start with the minor of the two pieces. The state senate approved Senate Bill 55 on a bipartisan vote. This bill, as I talked about last month, modernizes publication of minutes, of meeting minutes, held by school boards and other governmental bodies. WASB supports this bill based on our member-approved resolutions, and thanks Senator Dan Fayan and Jeremy Thiesfeldt, Representative Thiesfeldt, for authoring the bill. Action on this bill now moves to the Assembly, where the companion bill, Assembly Bill 60, has been referred to the Assembly Committee on Local Government, chaired by Representative Todd Knoback. No notices for a public hearing have been released as of this time. Going forward, the bill must still pass the Assembly and then be signed by Governor, I wanted to say Earl, but that dates myself. Governor Evers. I don't know where I came up with Earl. Governor Evers to become law. Speaking of Governor Evers, his state budget was released on February 16. He gave a budget address to lawmakers. This contains a strong public school funding component. His budget includes a significant investments in top WASB funding priorities. The first that I will look at, one of WASB's priorities, is to secure an increase in spendable resources for school districts that at a minimum equals or is greater than the rate of inflation in each year of the two-year state budget. So, that's the priority, and in the governor's budget, he is calling for providing an additional 612.
February 16th was a big day in the Capitol, but I'm going to start with the minor of the two pieces. The state senate approved Senate Bill 55 on a bipartisan vote. This bill, as I talked about last month, modernizes publication of minutes, of meeting minutes held by school boards and other governmental bodies. WASB supports this bill based on our member-approved resolutions, and thanks Senator Dan Fayan and Jeremy Thiesfeldt, Representative Thiesfeldt, for authoring the bill. Action on this bill now moves to the Assembly, where the companion bill, Assembly Bill 60, has been referred to the Assembly Committee on Local Government chaired by Representative Todd Novak. No notices for a public hearing have been released as of this time. Going forward, the bill must still pass the Assembly and then be signed by Governor, I'm going to say Earl, but that dates myself. Governor Evers, I don't know where I came up with Earl. Governor Evers to become law. Speaking of Governor Evers, his state budget was released on February 16th. He gave a budget address to lawmakers. This contains a strong public school funding component. His budget includes a significant investments in top WASB funding priorities. The first that I will look at on one of WASB's priorities is to secure an increase in spendable resources for school districts that at a minimum equals or is greater than the rate of inflation in each year of the two-year state budget. So that's the priority, and in the governor's budget, he is calling for providing an additional 612.8 million in state general aid to school districts over the biennium. This is the largest increase since the '05-'07 biennium. His budget calls for a $200 per pupil adjustment in school district revenue limits in years '21-'22, and 204 per pupil in years '22-'23. Increases the low revenue ceiling from 10,000 per pupil to 10,250 in years '21 and to '22, and 10,500 in years '22-'23 to provide greater revenue limit equity for low-spending school districts. This increase could help raise per pupil spending in an estimated 140 low-spending districts. The next priority that WASB has laid out is to secure a significant increase in special education categorical aid. And in the governor's budget, a couple components address just that. His budget is calling to provide an additional 709 million in special education categorical aid over the biennium. His budget also calls for increasing special education aid by 296.7 million in years '21- '22, and by 412.9 million in years '22 to '23. This will reimburse eligible special education costs at 45% and 50% respectively in those fiscal years. The next priority laid out by WASB is to secure a significant increase in resources for school-based mental health services to students and staff. Governor Evers' budget calls for providing an increase in 22.5 million in years '21-'22, and 24 million in years '22 to '23 for school mental health categorical aid. In addition, his budget calls for expanding the school mental health categorical aid program to support all pupil service professional staff expenditures and provide a roughly 10% reimbursement in each year of the biennium. The next priority set out by WASB is to secure provisions that mitigate the effects of the drop in student membership counts caused by the pandemic. And in the governor's budget, he does call for an adjustment to the rolling three-year membership average to account for the effect of the pandemic on overall district enrollment. In the governor's budget, he calls for increases in per pupil categorical aid payments from the current 742 per pupil to $750 per pupil, and provides districts with a supplemental aid payment of $75 for each low-income pupil. Also in his budget, he addresses some other elements that I didn't mention in that first post, some aspects of to grow schools in terms of sparsity aid. He calls for an increase in sparsity aid funding by roughly 10 million in each year to fully fund estimated eligible grants at 400 per pupil for sparse districts. He provides, he calls for providing sparsity aid grants of 100 per pupil for all districts with sparse student populations, at least 746 pupils. And beginning in years '22-'23, the budget calls for funding the sparsity aid program. Funding for the program would be switched from the state general purpose revenues to revenues derived from the taxation of recreational marijuana sales. In terms of pupil transportation aid, his budget calls for increasing the reimbursement rates for pupils transported more than 12 miles for an increase of $12, up to $375. His budget also addresses aid for English learner students, just to name a few. His budget calls for an increase in funding for EL programs by almost 10 million to boost the reimbursement rate for eligible costs from 8.1% to 15% in the '21-'22 school year. His budget calls for creating a $750,000 grant program in school years '22-'23. This will help school districts and independent charter schools identify and help teachers and staff obtain licensing as a bilingual teacher or teacher of English as a second language. His budget also calls for a number of provisions to address nutrition aid, just to name a few. Provides roughly 2.5 million in each year to fully fund reimbursement to school districts, private schools, and tribal schools under the new school breakfast program at 15 cents for each breakfast as required by current law. And lastly, in terms of education policy, his budget does call for a grant to provide funding for, a grant program to provide funding for officials to adopt nicknames, logos, and overall mascots, among other costs. So that was just scraping the surface, and then politics will certainly be at play because I know that all of that will not see the light of day at the end of the budget session, but we'll stay tuned and see what does transpire. Just a couple of other things to mention, February 26th, WASB held its first Capitol Chat webinar. This event updated members on a number of the latest legislative topics, including Governor Evers' budget proposal, vaccine updates, COVID liability protection, and addressing overall school start dates. That webinar is available on the WASB legislative blog. And they also conducted an interview with Assembly Education Chair Representative Jeremy Thiesfeldt. There is an interview on the legislative blog as well that gets his thoughts on the governor's budget proposal and other K-12 bills that were authored this session, so that's on there as well. In the state senate committee on education, they held a public hearing a couple weeks back on February 23rd and considered appointments and public testimony on a few bills. Senate Bill 39 by Senator Dewey Strobel. This bill allows a pupil who attends a virtual charter school to participate in interscholastic athletics and extracurricular activities in the pupil's resident school district. WASB's position on this bill is to oppose based on their member-approved resolutions. This bill prohibits a school district from being a member of WIAA in the '21-'22 school year unless during these years, the association considers the method by which educational programming was delivered to be an extenuating circumstance that justifies transferring schools. The next bill, Senate Bill 69 by Senator Alberta Darling. This bill, as I talked about last month as well, incorporates the Holocaust and other genocides into the social studies standards, requiring instruction on these topics. This is currently under review by WASB at this time. Senate Bill 95 creates sudden cardiac arrest awareness and informational requirements for youth sports, similar to those currently required for concussions and head injuries. WASB's position on this bill is neutral. Two more bills to mention out of this committee, coming from Senator John Balwick, our neighboring state senator. Senate Bill 109 is during the '21-'22 school year. Senate Bill 109 allows a pupil to attend a fully virtual option offered by a non-resident school board or charter school located in a non-resident school district under the full-time open enrollment program. And lastly, out of this committee, Senate Bill 110, current law limits the number of non-resident school boards to which a pupil may apply to attend a public school in a non-resident school district under the full-time open enrollment program to three non-resident school boards in any school year. And for Senate Bill 110, WASB's position is currently under review. The last thing I will mention is that there is an election coming up on April 6th, very important statewide superintendent race and school board races across the state, as well as our very own referendum locally. So I would urge everyone to vote on or by April 6th. Very important spring election coming up here in the next couple of weeks.
All right, thank you for the report, Troy.
I wonder in the national news, the 1.9 trillion does apparently have, when it's finally signed, some education money for schools, making any indication of whether that's true or whether it's not.
We haven't heard, there's nothing actionable yet.
Nothing in here.
Okay, next we'll move on to bills.
Okay, I would make a motion that the receipts be noted and the bills be paid as printed.
The motion, a second, that the receipts be noted and bills paid as printed. We have roll call, please, Mike?
Mr. Beer?
Yes.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Mrs. Ram?
Yes.
Mrs. Medina?
Yes.
Mr. Cranes?
Yes.
Mrs. Head?
Yes.
Mr. Bembel?
Yes.
Thank you, Maureen. Next item on our agenda is unfinished old business, an update on the referendum activities.
Yeah, so there isn't a ton new. We have one more information session, public information session left at the PAC, and the date is escaping my mind right now.
16.
Thank you. I was going to say the 17th, March 16th, 6:00 PM. It'll be very similar to the prior two, and we're going to continue with, you know, social media posts and making the rounds, as it were, to various community groups and so forth. They'll be on the radio later this week on WFHR. I think that's on Friday at 10:00, presenting to a couple of groups here spread at the two. There's going to be one more every door direct mail that goes out in the next couple of weeks that will be kind of like the last push, keeping in mind that once we adjourn for spring break, there'll of course still be some things that we got going, but that marks, you know, just about a week, give or take, prior to when April 6th rolls around. So it should, the timing should align pretty well with concluding things here towards the end of March, and we'll see what happens on April 6th.
Sounds good.
I had a call, one question was the gymnasium at Rudolph, and I wanted to check with Maureen to make sure that that's the only school that does not have the gymnasium elementary in the district. And so the person felt that was a little more needed if they couldn't even have a good exercise program under cafeteria size in these.
Yeah, it's a pretty limited space that they have, I think, yeah.
Okay, moving on to new business. The first item is possible action on employee appointments, resignations, and retirement requests.
You should have a sheet in front of you with the numbers. We've had zero the last number of months, we stockpiled. It's looking like we have a bunch of them. Nothing out of the ordinary with any of these, some replacements going on with the support staff resignations that we had kind of knew possibly were coming, so nothing that was really out of nowhere. And then the support staff resignations, the people looking just for somebody to stop work, they're not able to fill their time or do their jobs currently.
Well, I'd make a motion to approve the support staff appointments of Faith Peaslee and Keegan Crowley.
Second.
We have a motion, a second, to approve the support staff appointments of Faith Peaslee and Keegan Crowley. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Then I'd make a motion to approve the professional staff resignations of Cynthia Kane, excuse me, Lindsay Blank, Rachel Sheets, and Samantha Frams.
Second.
We have a motion, a second, to approve the professional staff resignations of Cynthia Kane, Lindsay Blank, Rachel Sheets, and Samantha Frams. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
And then I'd make a motion to approve the support staff resignations of Pam Walker and Pang Fu Kang.
Second.
We have a motion, a second, to approve the support staff resignation of Pam Walker and Pang Fu Kang. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Okay, and the last item on our agenda tonight is discussion on possible action to approve the final version of the Central Academy Charter School contract. Did we do that already?
Well, in a technical sense, I think your action in Ed Services kind of said, hey, this might change, so we're just approving what was discussed. And I think for posterity's sake, and as long as it is present under new business, there's absolutely no reason you can officially act on it. Although what I'll tell you is there's no changes based on what was discussed versus what you see here before you tonight, the changes that were, you know, reviewed verbally in the Ed Services meeting. So we already have received signature from the Governor's Board Chair of the impending charter, as well as some feedback from DPI, and none of those pieces changed any substantive nature of the charter contract. Therefore, we pretty much have the opportunity to act on it, and we'll get it signed, file conclusion of the meeting, and shipped off to DPI.
I would move then.
No, wait, I have a question.
Go.
On page 10 of the copy that was in the packet?
Yep.
He was struck out in the yellow version last week, but now it's back in.
Which word is it saying?
He in the, almost to the bottom of the page, right above section 5, 6.
The ensuring that a parent advisory council was established?
That was struck out in the yellow one.
Right, and the follow-up from DPI, what Jen had remarked was that we initially, they were initially under the impression that we wouldn't need a parent advisory council, but DPI had validated that, yes, in fact, you do.
Okay, and then is that the truth then? Because then under F, we had struck out, and the members of parent advisory council, that will stay in?
That's correct. So we have a governor's board and a parent advisory council.
Okay, and then on page 16, I thought we were told that they're going to go through trimesters rather than semesters?
And that did get changed, huh?
At the very last sentence.
That should have been changed to trimester.
So honestly, it appears right above page 16, right above the number 16, semester should be stricken and replaced with trimester.
And I would move that the virtual charter school contract be approved as described and changed.
Second.
We have a motion, a second, to approve the final version of the Central Looks Academy Charter School contract with the two revisions. Yes, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Both, motion carries. And looking at the calendar, what the only thing left this month is the last referendum informational meeting that Craig referred to, Tuesday the 16th, in the pack at 6:00